Looks like we're ready. I think we'll do a roll call. Should we start in the room again? Might as well. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Corney, County Council.
Laleah Neville, Public Information Officer.
And Brian Lee, Emergency Manager.
All right. And who do we have on the screen?
Dan Oshmore, Commissioner.
Annabelle Hadam, New York District Commissioner.
Greg Riddler, Sheriff's.
Eric Marial, Lieutenant.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
I can't see the screen, so I don't know if I'm on it, but this is Bennett Hall from the Gazette Times.
I just figured you'd be there somewhere.
Charlie Fountain is also on the line. Did I miss Charlie?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you.
There's several people talking.
And Nick, are you with us?
I'm with you.
All right. Do you think we got everybody? So, Item 6, Emergency Response Policy Team. Joe, will you start us off with that discussion?
You bet, Commissioners. Good morning, staff, good morning. I wanted to do two things today. First of all, I'd like to give a brief update to the Board regarding actions that the county is taking as an update. I have not had any FaceTime with you since last Thursday, so I'd like to give you a brief update. And then we're going to turn to some policy discussions that we need to walk through in order to ensure that we're all on the same page and that the folks in our Emergency Operations Center are able to take policy direction from the Board as they make decisions day in and day out. So I would like to just begin. Once I give my brief update, then we'll be turning it over to Charlie Fountain and Danielle. And then from there, we'll be turning it over to Brian Lee as the Director of our Emergency Operations Center. First of all, as it relates to county business, I have restructured the reporting relationships of our department heads. Commissioners, I have sent you an email regarding that, so that should not be news to you. We're trying to restructure our reporting relationships within our leadership team in order to provide us additional capacity to respond to the coronavirus incident. In addition to that, I've created a smaller executive team. This smaller executive team, which consists of myself, our Finance Director, our HR Director, Matt Weatherall, and Lori Starha, as well as Laleah and Nick. That small executive team is meeting every morning surrounding the coronavirus incident and the county organization's response to that. In addition, starting tomorrow, we will be providing our department heads a go-to-meeting update that will occur every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and that is starting up tomorrow. Also, we have been in discussions with the city over the last couple of days. As you're aware, we originally stood up a Joint Emergency Operations Center. We've been working through some of the mechanics of that with the city over the last few days. The city and the county have continued to commit to a Joint Emergency Operations Center, and we are finalizing an agreement that I believe will be approved later today that outline the terms of the Joint Emergency Operations Center. Brian will talk more about that here in just a few minutes. The county also took action, effective as of last night, to close any of our public lobbies to the public, so all of our county operations that are public-facing are now closed. However, each department is making provisions in order that customers can still gain assistance either online, via email, or over the phone. Once again, that went into effect last night. I would point out that Governor Brown's executive order that she issued yesterday morning, which was Executive Order 20-12, although there are some of those provisions of the executive order that do not apply to local governments, I want the Board to know that we are carrying out the spirit of that executive order, where it doesn't necessarily apply to local governments, and then those areas of the executive order that does apply specifically to local governments. We are addressing those items as identified in that executive order. The county has made significant progress over the course of the last week, week and a half, to direct as many of our employees that can telework out to their homes. That will continue, but we do have a significant number of employees who are currently teleworking, and that's throughout the ranks of our organization. Also, the county has been in discussions with AVSMI, and I do believe that we will be close to an agreement, if we're not already there, by late this afternoon, early this evening, relative to advancing additional benefits to employees under these extreme circumstances. Some of those benefits are dictated by the federal legislation that has recently taken effect, and other parts of that agreement are the county's willingness to advance sick time and how that sick time is repaid. So now that we're working with our labor entities and these agreements that we're coming to, we anticipate will also be applicable to non-reps as well. One of the additional things that I would like to just jump into, and Charlie, this is your on deck here, is that part of today's conversation is for the Board to understand the direction and the priorities that the Health Department has provided to our Incident Command, and those are from an overall coronavirus response perspective, and then also more specifically relating to some, addressing some of the issues surrounding our vulnerable populations. So I want to move from my quick update into the discussion regarding Health Department priorities, so the Board can hear from Charlie and Danielle and be able to ask them questions and weigh in on some of the policy issues as well. So with that being said, Charlie, if you would like to pick things up, also Commissioners, in your email this morning, I forwarded to you a draft of the items that Charlie is going to be talking with you today, so you do have access to that via email as we speak.
Okay, thank you, Joe. So, you know, as you're aware, Danielle and I are joint at the hip and tag-teaming this, so Danielle, feel free to weigh in at any point. It's a little more awkward in this format, but hope you're best not to talk over one another.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you speaking at this point.
I'm sorry, this is Charlie.
Oh, hi, Charlie, thanks.
What we've provided is the input that we have given.
My boss told me I had to stay home because.
Folks, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute your microphones. We're hearing conversations in the background. Thank you. Charlie, please continue.
Yep. So we have been working, particularly the Public Health Communicable Disease Team and Community Outreach folks, have been working with Brian very closely. Clear back to January, when we first started tracking this, and it was beginning to look like a potential global issue. And then in late January, when we organized department operations and organized ourselves into specific tasks in an ICS format within just the Health Department, I was in close touch with Brian back at that point, keeping him updated on the activities we were doing, so that we were set up in the cascading ICS structure. So if and when we started needing additional resources from elsewhere in the county or from emergency management, he was in the know about that right from the start. So I want to preface everything with that understanding that we've been working hand in glove for quite some time. Now that there is a well-organized and this joint EOC with the city and the county, we've started providing more detailed information on what exactly our internal and our overall health priorities are, so those can be worked into the operational plan for each operational period at the EOC. The document you've got, you received from Joe this morning, is the Health Department's three top priorities for the current operational period. So those are population-wide infection and transmission prevention. Number two, coordinating and fortifying the medical system in preparation for possible surgeon cases, or probable surgeon cases. Number three, strengthening and coordinating efforts to protect and care for highest-risk populations. You've got that in front of you. I think we'll just walk through very high level. So number one, the population-wide infection, transmission. This is public messaging, and this is what we've been working closely with Laleah and the JIC, again, back to January, and in a very concentrated way since mid-February, trying to reinforce national messages, setting up the website with the detailed local information, setting up a system with them to get reliable and consistently updated information posted. And then, what we've talked about many times before, that message congruence with OSU, with Samaritan, with the school districts, with businesses, with many local partners, so that we're all saying the same thing. So this is along the same lines and utilizing a variety of methodologies and resources to get those prevention messages out there and reinforce the governor's messages now and the "stay home, stay healthy, stay safe" messages on top of everything else. Number two, again, this is in preparation for medical surge. Samaritan, of course, has their own Incident Command structure, very robust. There's a lot of planning going on there, but there's been much more than that going on. So the three county health officers, Lynn Benton Lincoln, paired up with the Samaritan Infectious Disease Practice, the three doctors there, one of them happens to be also the Lynn County Health Officer. They started talking in January on a regular basis, Mondays and Thursdays, and it brought in the medical directors of virtually every clinic in the area and have been checking in, helping to coordinate plans. All three communicable disease programs from three counties are involved in those discussions. And one of the things that Danielle and I came up is we have not, up until this point, had behavioral health and community mental health participation from Benton County on that group. And so we are adding that now. The other thing is that that group of medical planners and medical directors has not been really tied into the EOC to this point. So we've been having discussions with Brian about getting some representation and more direct tie-in to that medical system. The EOC's been working on PPE and those issues. There's a lot of other stuff going on around the kind of things the community health centers are doing with external triage, cutting back on elective processes, those kind of things that have largely come out of this work group, and tying those more intentionally together with the EOC at all levels. So it's not just a supply issue, but it's tying them into a whole medical strategy a little more tightly.
Charlie, can I add to that? I'm sorry. Can I add to that? This is Danielle. So adding to that, we recognized, as Charlie and I were talking, that behavioral health is going to continue to be really important with managing and supporting folks as we go through this, because, you know, people are now more isolated. Folks that previously only had work or school as support are going to be more isolated and more left alone, which increases the depression and anxiety. So we're recognizing that we're going to have to also build some additional mental health supports as we move forward, because that's just going to get worse as people are isolated longer and longer. And with the curve not flattening, I don't expect that this is going to be a short-term fix. So we're looking at having to also redirect resources for those crisis-type services that we think are going to come in the near future.
Yeah, it's just an incredibly important component, and it will be absolutely critical for this long term. We're really concerned, and have had long discussions with Brian and with Laleah, about starting to plan ahead for preparedness and prevention fatigue setting in. You know, we're doing these kind of meetings and these kind of activities, and staying isolated, stay home, stay healthy, for a week is one thing. When we start talking about four or five weeks or more of this, potentially much more than that, it's really going to get old, and that whole piece of community robustness and community support is going to be increasingly important. The third part of this is strengthening and coordinating efforts to protecting care for the highest-risk populations. We've identified five groups that we particularly feel in need of some concentration in outreach and addressing liaison. One is homeless, and there's a strong group that has started work there. And we've been providing input through Julie and others to some efforts there, and there's some very good public health guidance up to it, including some US military guidance on how to set up. They've got history going back to 1918, and sort of how not to organize barracks in group living situations, and many, many other examples. So they've got some excellent guidance. There's many, many others. There's others that are aimed specifically at shelters. So utilizing as much of that national input and other resources as we can around that group. Long-term care facilities are a second at-risk group. We've seen that in Washington. We've seen it in VA. We have influenza sweep-through, long-term care facilities, norovirus, very challenging environments. The EOC has been in close touch. The Communicable Disease Team has been in close touch. We want to keep those organizations and those businesses as a high priority. Oregon State University, they are going to continue to house several thousand students regardless of the model and the distance learning. They will continue to have a concentration of students in housing and dining. There's also Greek chapter houses that, while not operated by Oregon State University, are associated with Oregon State University. We've been providing input with them. We have a great operating relationship with OSU Housing and Dining, but we want to retain them as a priority area, because if we have a problem in a residence hall or a dining facility, those are obviously gathering spots and at-risk places. Senior and disability services, we want to make sure that those high-risk populations, we've got some really good resources through DHS, Dial-a-Bus, a number of other outreach organizations. We want to make sure that those are kept as a priority and have the resources that they need. If they're losing volunteers, we may have to backfill those with some city and county resources. They're just indispensable to the health and welfare of those populations. And that, and the socially-isolated is our last. And that really gets back to Danielle's point about the resiliency. Socially-isolated is everyone from those folks with a chronic or persistent mental illness that may self-isolate or be otherwise socially-isolated. They are the aging in place that are served by senior and disability services, or not served by senior and disability services. But neighbors know who they are, faith communities help support them. You know, there are groups in every neighborhood organizing to shop and check in on people and get medications. We want to make sure that's on the radar of the EOC, that those sort of things, information is going out, information is coming in, and the resources are there for those. So that's just kind of a quick walkthrough of this priority list that we've provided. Do you have anything else to add, Danielle?
So I think we just want to be clear that we wanted, when we were creating this list, we were really thoughtful about not being either too high-level or too in the weeds. We wanted it to be broad enough that there was some flexibility, both with Commissioners, with City Council, and with the EOC, to make some decisions and have some processes in place that can help support those decisions, but not be so far in the weeds that we're really dictating what those decisions are or are not. So this also has, like Charlie said, has been shared with Julie and will be shared with the public, I'm sorry, the community-based organizations that are asking for resources around homeless intervention. And this will help guide some of those decisions in terms of what the EOC can and can't do. So I think we just wanted to be really clear that we were trying to be concise and provide some support, but not be too dictatorial in what we were putting out as priorities.
The one other thing I'll add, that this is all underlaid with the health principle of equity. So we want to make sure that all of these issues are addressed in terms of multicultural, multilingual, accessible to low literacy, and multiple communication channels. So just want to make sure that's understood as well.
Charlie and Danielle, I think this hits the right balance. It's a very good overview, and I look forward to making decisions as we go. I think that one of the things that's challenging from the get-go was everyone trying to figure out who was making which decisions about what, when, and what funding streams and support systems were available. And that's starting to shake out, so I hope that that will get clearer and clearer. And I'd have to say thank you for Julie Arena. I think her regular calls with the social services group, and it's quite a broad group, it's not just folks serving the homeless, has been very helpful.
Yeah.
It's just made people settle out, settle down.
And I think that's something we need to keep doing, because I think this has to be a united effort. Like, we have to all be on the same page moving this forward, or it's just going to get so disjointed and nobody's going to be able to accomplish anything.
And I would say that, you know, there is funding coming down through, say, the Oregon Housing and Community Services through the Community Services Consortium that will build some of these needs. So, and I think as we start to clarify what strands are coming from where, that will help immensely. Yes.
The other thing that we want to make sure that this is also taking into account not just Corvallis and North Albany employment, but rural Benton County. And so we've explicitly written in, you know, rural community groups, granges, the volunteer fire departments and QRTs out in the county, because those are real unifying and communication channels that are vitally important to the folks in the unincorporated parts of the county.
Food banks and gleaners have also been really helpful that way.
Okay.
Charlie, I appreciate your comments on working with the rural areas, and I know that's a challenge, but that is important. The Governor's executive order yesterday, is that helpful in coordinating our efforts and kind of giving us some guidance on terminology and what we should be, what we all should be doing?
I certainly hope so. It's that north star that we'll keep pointing at. We've referenced it in this document, and I think that, you know, that is the unifying factor, and it's what all of my colleagues around the state are pointing at a lot. And we've talked to a few about this before, that, you know, similar orders or efforts, whether they're on a municipal basis, a neighborhood basis, a county basis, while not ineffective, have limited impact compared to doing this statewide and having consistency from jurisdiction to jurisdiction and area to area.
And I would emphasize the term "consistency" in message is critical, because there's a lot of, I forget what your term is, Charlie, but there's a lot of information out there that should be ignored in making sure that we're seen as the source of accurate information and links to more detail.
The infodemic goes on.
Infodemic.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that's on recommended actions on the second bullet point, that's why we are, on both first and second, that's why we talked about doing more intentional outreach with some of those locations, because that's the only way you're going to stem that.
And I would like to just jump in and say, you know, use us as Commissioners in our networks, and if you need to do little videos or whatever, use us to help and get word out wherever you can.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
The other piece of this is Charlie and I both recognize that this is a moving target. So while these are the priorities for today, we recognize that these may need to shift as this pandemic moves forward. So as that happens, we'll certainly make sure to make Commissioners aware and continue these conversations, because I do think it's more than likely that these will have to be adjusted.
Danielle, listen, Vance, I would encourage you, as we have these Tuesdays and Thursday meetings, if there is a change, at the very outset of these meetings, please note that, so that there is some context for the conversation moving forward within those meetings.
Of course, that's a great, yeah, that's a great point. Thank you.
We'll definitely do that. You know, this will be part of the, you know, You know, this will be part of the, you know, for each operational period, the EOC looks at its operational plan and its priorities, and these will be part of that process, and we'll certainly make a point to loop back to all of you.
Yep.
And Commissioners, that's what I wanted to emphasize, is that as the operational periods change, currently I believe they're 48 hours or two days in length, and what's being worked at is if there are changes to those priorities that the Health Department is making, they'll be informing the Director of the Emergency Operations Center what those changes are at the beginning of each operational period. So there are some conversations that will be going on, as I just described, that you are not included in, but we will try and brief you as frequently as we can as things begin to evolve.
Well, I'd just say that this document should not be looked at as a list of things that are not being done, and this is not our list of unfilled tasks or priorities that are not being addressed. These are our top priorities to be looked at, you know, are they being fulfilled and need to keep being paid attention to? Are they partially done, need more effort? Or are they something that's fallen through the cracks that need particular attention and bolstering? So there's no intention here of saying that none of this work is being done and/or that we're completely driving the ship here.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments for Charlie or Danielle?
I guess my only question is, are there any specific policy guidance questions that you want from us now? And are there specific resources to be deployed that we need to discuss, or is it too early for that?
Actually, I think Brian is going to be jumping into that conversation here in just a moment, but before Brian does, Charlie and Danielle, feel free to respond.
From my point of view, I would say the public messaging and, you know, our, both Brian and us working with Lilia and the JIC, I think the concept of using elected officials and other decision leaders in the community as role models and as spokespersons is pretty good.
I agree.
Okay.
Thanks. It will help. I think that there are a lot of us in the elected arena that are feeling like we don't have a clear hands-on role, and it's sometimes challenging.
Yeah, I think my ask would be to really be intentional about supporting the governor's order. I mean, I realize you guys are doing that naturally anyways, but I think there's still a lot of people that aren't taking that very seriously. So that's where it would stop with that infection and transmission prevention in terms of just making sure that everybody is seeing this as serious and something they need to really address on an ongoing basis right now.
On that front, I am hearing and sensing a bit of confusion about the governor's executive order, and I wanted to just throw this out. As I understand it, basically what she said is she's not shutting everything down because she wants to keep as much of the economy going as possible, but the way that the order is written, any kind of service that depends on person-to-person physical contact or where there's no social distancing possible is closed, and she listed a whole bunch of those. But everything else may continue as long as social distancing is practiced. And I think that there's going to be some gray area there, and I'm already hearing some issues around that and some questionable activity because of it. So as much as we can clarify, that would probably be helpful.
I think the clarification will be, will continue to be challenging, because it will be case by case, and people will search for loopholes and ways to carry on their lives. I think one thing that elected officials and other leaders can do is continue to role model meetings like this. So this is what I'm talking about, you know, three, four, or five weeks from now, that you are still operating this way, not falling back into old patterns. These are, this is challenging. This will become more challenging as things become more complicated and as, you know, it's, well, boy, it's just going to be easier if we just sit down for 15 minutes on this instead of trying to coordinate, you know, a conference call. So I think continuing to model and to be examples of the need to maintain these kind of efforts will be important as well.
Well, Charlie and Danielle, I really appreciate getting these priorities down, and I appreciate that they will be adjusted. We're in a fluid situation, but I like the roadmap that you've set out and really appreciate your efforts in guiding us through this.
Thank you.
I think we'll move on to Brian Lee and what things look like.
So again, my name is Brian, I'm the emergency management for Benton County, and what I really want to talk about first is the overall functions of the EOC. So what is the EOC for? The main purpose of the EOC is really coordination of resources. There is some decision-making power within the EOC director role, as well as the different section chief roles that are contained within the EOC. However, the overall purpose of it is to coordinate and support whatever is going on in the field, for lack of a better term. So we, the whole reason why we stood up and declared is to support the Health Department objectives and focus. So these priorities that the Health Department set forth and put in writing here today have been there, and they've been discussed regularly since the beginning. So we created our own set of objectives to support these, as well as support the emergency management, state, local, and every other sort of directives we've received. That's based off of our emergency operations plan, and that's also based on what, as this event changes, what the, basically the new priorities are from the state. So that's kind of the overall function of the EOC. One thing I do want to highlight is, as we work out our MOU with the City of Corvallis in general, there are things that the EOC can and cannot do. We do have some control over resources, but we can't do a carte blanche order to make different jurisdictions or different agencies do something, regardless of how much we want them to. We can leverage them, we can ask them, we can work out agreements and deals, and again, coordinate, but we don't really have any mandating powers to tell a jurisdiction that they have to comply or do something. So I just kind of wanted to say that.
Brian, I need to interject real quick.
Yes.
If you could slow down and talk more directly into a microphone, folks are having difficulty hearing you.
Okay. Do you need me to start that? The folks online, you can start that.
Do you have a laptop with you?
I do not.
Well, this, can we set that on a chair? Would this help?
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Okay, is that a little bit better? Hopefully. So just to recap what I had just stated, basically the function of the Emergency Operations Center is to act as a coordination hub for all the resources and priorities for folks in the field. It's really straightforward with something like a fire or flood or a law enforcement incident. It's a little bit more nebulous with this health emergency. However, the overall goal for the EOC is to support whatever the Health Department or the Health folks deem as the priorities. So these priorities that we've been, that Charlie and Danielle just covered, our whole focus in the EOC is to support this effort 100%. And what resources we really bring to bear are networking opportunities, essentially. So we have a whole set of workforces with different positions, doing different tasks, and the main focus of them is to coordinate each of these functions to accomplish each task. So we get really down into the weeds in the EOC and make sure everyone has an individual task assignment that is tied directly to these overall priorities. We also set our own priorities based on our emergency operations plan, any other plans that we have existing within the county or the cities, as well as at the state level as well. So when the state sets certain priorities and objectives, we also are expected to sort of meet, comply with those. So in addition to Charlie's, I'll cover our overall EOC objectives very quickly and then talk about just two main operational focuses, just to give you an example. So our overall EOC objectives are coordinate and manage information between cooperators and local government. So that's not just Lilia's effort in the JIC and PIO functions to be external, this is to be more external with specific organizations, such as long-term care facilities, hospitals, clinics, service, community service providers, businesses. And the goal here is to be proactive and make sure they are all receiving the information, the documents, the messaging, everything that they need to feel supported by us, and also for us to hear what their needs are, so we can start putting them in the queue and try to meet their needs as they come up. The next one is develop priorities and framework for advanced planning and complete the EOC Action Plan. So the EOC really, the whole purpose, or the way it drives forward, is a very coordinated planning process, and that's the focus there. So every operational period, as mentioned by Joe and Charlie, we set priorities and we adjust to new priorities as new things come up, and we create a comprehensive plan for how those priorities are going to be met each operational period. So some priorities continue on throughout the event, some of them will change operational period to operational period. As Joe mentioned, our operational period right now is 48 hours. We are actually going to be transitioning next week to a five-day operational period to give folks more time to work through the process and complete tasks before they get put on break. For the advanced planning topic, that is thinking ahead based on some of the Health Department priorities for things such as alternate care facilities, if we have to set up a field hospital, deal with volunteer donations, all of that is considered advanced planning. So looking ahead to the next week, two weeks, three weeks, month, what does this start to look like? And then in the long term, really long term, next year, six months to a year, we're looking at economic recovery. So we're trying to put our minds and wrap our minds around what's economic recovery here in Benton County going to start looking like, and we're trying to plan ahead for that. Our next priority is maintain up-to-date public information and participate in proactive public messaging. This is 100% geared towards Lilia and her efforts within the Joint Information Center and the Public Information Officer. So those are the putting out proactive interviews, any messaging received, making it clear and concise, translating it, making it equitable. All of those functions are contained here in that objective. And we sent out an Everbridge alert yesterday to let folks know about the new governor's executive order and just the where to get information, as well as our call bank number. So we really want to be accessible to all individuals. The last one here is really the biggest one, support public health department operations center resource needs. So as the public health department, Health Department in general comes up with resource needs, whether that's for personal protective equipment or personnel or whatever the need is, we are there to support their effort 100%. We understand that they have limited staff and limited capabilities for an incident this large, and we can't pull upon our normal mutual aid systems within the state because it's a nationwide event. So we are here to support that ask. And one good example is one of our focuses, and looking at Charlie and Danielle's coordinating and fortifying medical system, is to deal with personal protective equipment resources. So we received some resources from the state. We also had some left over from a previous cache that we are coordinating based on the state's guidance, getting that PPE out to different care facilities. So there's a certain hierarchy of who is supposed to receive it that we are following, so it's very clear and transparent and everyone is treated equally. The other one tied to that, and this is again to support fortifying the medical system and helping out the community, is volunteer donations. We are going to be standing up a more comprehensive volunteer donation management process so we can start taking in donations, not of money, but of very specific pieces of protective equipment, and getting it, using that matrix, out to the right care facilities and service providers who need it most. So we're really trying to link up the community and coordinate with everyone as best as possible, and that's overall what the EOC does. Thinking ahead related to where I sort of need leverage and direction from the policy group or from the commissioners specifically, is as we get into some of Charlie and Danielle's focus on their number three, strengthening and coordinating efforts to protect care for high-risk populations, what I need to know is, we need to lay out a menu of options of things that we can do very easily to help this community and things that will be a lot harder. In other words, more personnel resources, higher dollar amounts, more liability, all of those things. And then I will basically need the policy group to set some of those objectives and what they are willing to agree to, and I will need that in writing. So then both the city side, if they're taking over as EOC director, and myself, we can really focus on and accomplish what you guys want. And we don't need to get all the way down into the weeds of how many, say, handwashing stations or anything like that. We can figure that out, and that's what the EOC will do. We just need to know that that's a priority and that we're willing to spend the funds and resources to accomplish that, and understanding where our current priorities are and how some of our current priorities will get, not necessarily pushed aside, but there could be some reprioritizations if we decide these, or the commissioners set new priorities. So we're not asking for a whole overhaul on all our priorities, but if they want to weigh in and influence some of them, we need to know what level is this? Because right now, our main focus is making sure that PPE resources get out to the care providers in the community. That's the number one for us right now. So that's just how the commissioners and the policy group can weigh in and influence what we are doing within the EOC. As EOC director, I have obviously many spending authority limits and liability limits that I'm not willing to necessarily put the county into, but if the commissioners want that and they're willing to, again, put that in writing and prioritize it, they can set those priorities and agree to them, and I can carry them out with the proper approvals.
I, thank you, Brian. That's very helpful. I think the coordination role and the liaison role, as I mentioned already, that Julie Arena, Matt Gillespie, Rishi Ammadi, others are providing, is really useful, because it's not always a city and county responsibility to step in, but sometimes it is. And it's very, it's great to understand that the personal protective equipment is the highest priority right now, and I am looking forward to thinking or having someone think through strategically that kind of easy, hard, expensive, not expensive liability issue, using all those criteria to think about some of those vulnerable populations. And I understand that there are multiple ones, congregant living, including the Greek system, the homeless, et cetera. One of the observations I've made as I've been out in town is that at a certain time of day, almost the only people you see downtown are members of the homeless or houseless population. And so they are clearly very much out and about, and they're everywhere because they have no place to go. So I remain concerned about that population and about how best to serve their needs. I know that the social service groups are doing a great job in trying to provide services and, but I think it's going to become more of an issue with time. I also want to applaud Samaritan, because Anita from Samaritan is working extremely hard as liaison to get any of those that have been tested and identified as potentially infectious into hotels, motels, and into isolation, but I just remain concerned, so need to voice that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments for Brian? Well, I had one. We're currently on a 48-hour rotation, is that?
Correct.
And next week, extend that to the work week?
The whole work week, yep. And it's just very normal, more or less normal business hours.
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
Okay.
Yes.
So the hours haven't changed, but the duration of the shift?
Yes, and two bits to elaborate on there. One is we found that two days is, people get tired of spending the second day, but it's too short. People get in a really good flow, they figure out the team and all the technology and all the pieces, and then they have to start planning to hand it over to the pieces, and then they have to start planning to hand it over to the next one. And so everyone, almost everyone has asked, it would be nicer if we were in here for a little longer so we'd actually accomplish our list of tasks. One thing we do regularly is meet, there's a lot of meetings, where we're just checking in, how are your tasks coming? Are your people completing the objectives? Are we moving in the right direction? All the time to make sure everyone's staying on track. And that's this common feedback that we get is we like to be in here a little longer and actually commit the time we need to accomplish these things, see something start to finish, and then be done. So that's part of that change. The other change is we are going to maintain the social distancing practices and everything else, but we want to be more or less co-located in the same overall facility. So right now, we're doing everything as virtually as possible. It is extremely challenging because some of the best conversations and things get solved in a basically face-to-face or by overhearing a conversation that other folks are having. And that really needs to happen where they're in, at least the same facility or on the same sort of campus or compound. So we are discussing moving from where we're currently at to a different location to facilitate that a little more. And as this expands, we're going to need more and more people involved, so we're going to have to expand our space and our footprint to maintain social distancing. And Charlie, in consultation with Charlie and Danielle a lot, it's very important that we do that so we don't get our command group, our EOC group, sick because that will cripple our efforts significantly. So we are really, really being serious about that and practicing good hygiene and everything else all the time, and we want to maintain that. But we do want to have a little bit more interaction with people in, for lack of a better term, face-to-face, nearby enough to have a real conversation with that's not always on a conference call. And again, what we're finding is there might be a glitch from one conference call to another, and then people get dropped, and they miss out on all of it. We're not really repeating information over and over.
Okay. And you're currently at the Corrells Fire Training Center?
Currently, that's where we're at, and we're looking at some various options for facilities, so.
For more space?
More space. We've got some different ideas, but we're working out all the logistics. So we hope to have that done and moved by the end of next week.
Okay. And I think some of this seems complicated and is complicated, but you get back to two or three points of social distance, wash your hands like your mother told you to, and those simple things, messaging repeatedly, I think can do a lot of good. We've had, I think, plenty of reports of groups not taking the social distancing seriously, and we need to do that ourselves as role models, but also to have the best chance of keeping healthy.
Absolutely.
And Brian, I just want to make sure you're very clear. So you heard Charlie's priorities, and you've got your priorities for the next 48 hours until this group gets together again. Are you clear on the priorities for the EOC?
Yes, 100%.
All right.
That's a good, that's a good perspective.
Pat, one of the concerns I have is, and I think our folks are doing a great job, that I think that messaging is really important, including from the local level. We have a lot of incoming come from national news that is just conflicting all over the place, especially from the White House. So how do we manage our local messaging so that people pay more attention to what we're trying to do and reassure them than what they're getting from other venues?
I'm actually going to maybe defer that one to Lilia. My comment there is our main effort is to, like when we sent out the Everbridge, steer them to our webpage that has reputable information from CDC and OHA, and we are always updating that. And that proactive messaging that Lilia is working on a little bit more, focused on some of the interviews and frequently asked questions. So I'll let Lilia comment on that a little bit more.
Commissioner, could you repeat the question for me, my apologies?
I was just talking about my concern about how our messages are being received by the public at large in terms of what we're doing. I think you're both doing a great job in your messaging appropriately, but there's still a lot of people that are focused on the incoming from the national news specifically, not the newscasters, but just off-the-hand comments. And I'll say it from the President, it's not reassuring. And although he tried to be reassuring, it's just not working in the way I think it should. So how do we, I guess my question is, how do we keep our message clear and reassure people that we know what we're working on as best we can and that they just need to be paying attention to what their local folks are doing in terms of looking out for them during this part of time?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So a two-part answer for you. One is that we are, we've actually requested some administrative support to do our national news monitoring for us. So we currently have someone who is tasked with monitoring national news stations, a wide variety of them, so not just a single perspective that's being represented in the news stream. So that individual monitors the national news and then almost performs kind of a qualitative content analysis of what is being broadcasted on the national news. We then overlay that with all of the public messaging that we're doing on a local level, and then we're doing an analysis on that gaps because we recognize that if we're not talking about it, but the national media is talking about it, then our community is going to start talking about it on their Facebook groups or, I was going to say at the park, but now parks are closed, so that will happen at the park, so mainly on their Facebook groups at this point. So that is one tactic that we're taking, that tracking kind of tactic. And then number two, we're just trying to consistently feed the need for information so when folks can't readily find the information that they're looking for from a local entity or news source, then they will have to go to other sources that perhaps are not as trusted. And so if we continue, we, Benton County and the Emergency Operations Center, if we continue to issue messaging about what our response is and what our local elected officials are doing, hopefully that that information from a trusted authority will be right at their fingertips and that will intercept any, I guess, national news coverage of other elected officials. But again, we can't control what folks look at on the internet or watch on TV or, you know, any of that. So we just are doing our best job to try and saturate as much as possible locally.
And I appreciate that. And it's just a concern I have, and I recognize that we have no control over that. And I just feel somewhat frustrated sometimes, but I'm hoping that our ground professionals have, are more trusted than they are of other, other people can be very trusted, that they are very trustworthy is what I'm saying. And so just want to keep up that good response that you're doing and really applaud everything that everybody is doing within the county. I just, my frustration is really focused on folks that aren't messaging this right.
Certainly.
Are there any other comments for Brian or Charlie and Danielle?
Actually, do have one, Commissioner Muller. So my last comment too is moving forward on the twice-weekly policy meetings, I will attend these, and that's not only an opportunity for the policy group to weigh in on the EOC objectives, but I will start doing a, what I'll just call, end of an operational period sort of summary. So it'll be a very, very brief, you know, one-page, half-page journal, what we mainly focused on, what the priorities were, where we got to, just to keep everyone in the loop on where we're at, so how we're progressing along, and just to demonstrate that we are accomplishing a lot of our tasks and objectives and moving forward. That way, you guys can sort of see on an executive level what we're doing.
Thank you.
I guess one comment I have is I appreciate your talk about the limitations of virtual meetings versus being in a shared space and figuring out how to work with that. I don't think there's any question you get more done, more ideas advanced with people in some proximity, even if it's six feet apart.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Muller and I do have another policy issue to talk with the board about before Brian leaves.
Okay.
So he's putting that on your radar.
I think that would be, that would fit in now, Joe.
Great. Commissioners, I'm going to migrate the conversation to one surrounding essential personnel relative to county employees. I am looking to see if Tracy Martino is still on the line.
I'm here.
Okay, great, Tracy. If you would like to interject, Commissioners, I did send you an email this morning with some draft language, so you should have that in your email box. That's what Tracy will be reviewing. Commissioner Muller, if you haven't seen it, I'll pass you a hard copy here.
Okay.
If you'd like one.
Yes, thank you.
So go ahead, Tracy.
Okay. So hopefully what you have in front of you is an excerpt from our current policy that's related to implement weather and other emergencies and procedures that correspond to this situation. And in particular, I excerpted number five, which is 24-hour operations and essential personnel. And in that paragraph A, that is existing policy language. The paragraph that follows is what I recommend in consultation with Vance Premier, our county council, how we apply that language in our current situation. And what this interpretation does is put every employee on notice that they may be tapped as essential personnel. However, not every employee will be tapped at the same time. I'm happy to respond to any questions that you might have, or Vance, if you would like to add anything to this.
This is, I think, the result of a question of how we interpret the above policy, which is 5.24. And I think it is essentially the county's desire to take as broad interpretation as possible of what constitutes essential personnel so as to allow the county the greatest flexibility moving forward in the coming weeks and months. And so this additional policy component that Tracy drafted, I think reflects that desire to give us the greatest number of potential essential personnel designees to fulfill our need for flexibility down the road.
Commissioners, I would also echo that. When I first broached this conversation, it was surrounding, I believe, the need that the county will have to have access to as many employee resources as possible over the course of this incident. And working with Tracy, Vance, and others, I think this strikes that the ability that I was looking for to make sure we had as many resources available at our disposal as possible. I think we may find ourselves in a situation potentially whereby one department may need assistance from another department, where our incident command may need assistance from departments and/or specific employees with certain skill sets. And so I believe that this begins to lay the foundation to meet the county's operational needs.
And oh.
This looked good. Do we need to take action on it?
If this is a policy addition you'd like to implement, then you do need to take an action, and that action would be to, a motion, a second, to approve this policy addition to the Benton County personnel policies.
I would move approval of this amendment to Benton County personnel policies to clarify essential personnel in light of this particular COVID-19 emergency. I will second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And I guess, this is a perfect example, I think, and I just want to make sure that all three Commissioners are clear. This is a really good example of the type of action that the chair could have taken yesterday and then brought to you for approval. It is the backside of the coin. The first side was the closure of the public lobbies. So these are the two different ways we are approaching these sort of emergent topics that come to you.
And we need the flexibility to act and then ratify at a subsequent board meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to practice both means.
We're going to be getting a lot of practice.
Anything else, Brian?
Nope. Just thank you for letting me be here.
Get back to work.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your efforts. Are the personnel holding up all right?
They are. Actually, I'm overwhelmingly impressed by everyone's willingness, both city and county employees, to not only work together, but there's very, there's none of the, oh, that's city problem or county problem. It's very quick in that room. People just drop in, they do the tasks. You can tell that the training has been effective, but even some of the people who haven't been trained very much are picking it up extremely quickly. So there's a couple people from our recent ICS 300 foreigner class, and I've been joking with them about being, are they surprised they thought, they never thought they'd be using it? And they are doing an extremely good job. So it's pretty amazing to watch and be part of, see it.
Well, I was impressed with the recommendations from the staff, requests from the staff for, let's work longer.
I'm a little surprised as well, but honestly, watching it happen, it makes sense. They want to get something, they want to see an outcome, so.
And we're used to the week-long structure.
Anyways, yep.
I think that's definitely worth trying.
We'll see how it goes. The attendance basically having four solid days of actual tasks, and the last day will be an admin day to wrap things up and finish paperwork and get things ready for the next group. So try to keep it light on that last fifth day.
Okay. Well, keep us posted.
All right. Thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is new business 7.1, resolution authorizing financing for the FISER building. Are you there, Mary?
I am here.
Okay. Would you give us a little background and then if we're so inclined, Commissioners have a resolution?
All right. Commissioner, I came and met with you in January about authorizing the county to issue debt for the purchase of the FISER or the building on Sunset Way, or Research Way. I can't even get it right.
4,500 Research Way.
Yeah. Someday it'll have a name, and it'll be much easier to say. At that time, I asked for authority to issue $10 million of debt, thinking that would cover the remodel cost and some other incidental-type things. And since that period of time, lots have changed. One of the items that has changed is the cost of the remodel is larger than we anticipated. We don't have, because of the pandemic, we haven't really spent a lot of time with our design team for to get solid costs, so we're kind of estimating what the cost might be. And we also have the uncertainty about what FISER is going to be doing in the future and how soon we'll be able to actually utilize some of the other parts of the building. So those are all considerations in what we need to borrow if we can remodel more of the building at this time. And another consideration is the Lincoln Health Clinic. We didn't initially think about borrowing for that, for the share that the general fund is going to put in. We didn't initially think about borrowing for that, for the share that the general fund is going to put in. The health clinics have said they will put in $2 million. And that leaves about $1.1 billion that the general fund would contribute. So at this time, we, Joe and I spoke with Matt Donahue, our financial advisor, last week, and asked him, given the market rates right now, how soon we could get this debt to market. And he brought up to us the authorizing resolution. And I said, oh, we have one of those for $10 million. And at that time, we thought, well, maybe we ought to get another one for a higher limit. And that's what I'm bringing to you today, is to increase that to $11 million. And we don't have to commit to this until we have, it'll probably be four weeks before we actually have to commit to an amount. But we have a lot of work to do with bond counsel and the financial advisor to get this moving so that we can sell debt, hopefully while the markets are still down, and it makes sense to do it.
Commissioners, also just interjecting that it's likely going to be the end of April before we have more definitive costs from DLR, who is leading our design efforts. So with that in mind and with us trying to move forward with the issuance of debt, we thought by getting this in front of you now, it wouldn't delay things on the back end. But we will have more specific costs a little more than four weeks from now, four to six weeks from now. In addition to that, I do believe that some of the sustainability components to the remodel may add up more than what we originally projected. And while we still have a lot of decision-making that we can do and flexibility, we just wanted to go ahead and get this in place so it doesn't hold things up towards the end when we are going to be crunched for making decisions. And as Mary indicated, you will have another opportunity, at which point we're issuing debt when you're approving that issuance of debt as it relates to the specific dollar amount. But I think this gives us the bandwidth we need, or the room that we need at this point in time.
To go forward. Okay. Mary, I know at your January report, you talked about bank loans being limited to $10 million a year. And it sounds like you have further information on that. Would you share that?
Right. The bank loans, banks will loan more than $10 million. The $10 million limit is for banking industries. They get a, it just left my mind. It's bank-certified debt for any one entity, so they get credit for loaning to local governments, but it's $10 million a year. So the cost could go up if we wanted to borrow in excess of the $10 million in one calendar year. We're also looking to selling bonds. Right now, the bond market went the opposite way of the Fed rate, which doesn't normally happen. And so we're hoping to see that correct itself. And I have a conference call here today at 1:30 with, again, with our financial advisor as well as bond counsel, so I get a better update too of what's going on with the bond market. So this one, this month of April is going to determine what type of debt we issue as well.
Okay.
But the rates are very favorable right now. They're under, easily under three and closing it at 2.5, so. But that's such change on a whim, so don't know.
So, Mary, it just sounds like we need to be, we need to remain as flexible as we can. And the restrictions that we have in place will allow you to do that. And we're just asking for, you're asking for authority to borrow $1 million more so we can cover the cost of the clinic as well as the project, the 4,500 Research. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, my position is we need to keep this project moving forward and be ready to act at the appropriate time. So I think this, this makes sense. Annabelle, do you have any comments?
No, I think it's great, and I'll move, I'll make, I'll make the motion to go ahead and do that. I would second that.
So just technically, then, the motion is to authorize the adoption of the resolution authorizing Benton County to borrow more than $11 million for the acquisition of the 4,500 Southwest Research Way building and to fund the general fund portion of the construction of the Lincoln Health Center. Is that what I heard you say, Annabelle?
No, it was, it was. He said more than. I could say no more than $11 million.
When I say more than, it goes with public libraries. What can I say?
That's right.
All right, we have the motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Mary. We are now, unless there's any further question on that, we're moving to number eight, Commissioner updates. Do you have anything for us, Zan?
The only thing that I would put forth is that I have been following pretty closely the liaison calls with the social service sector, just because a lot of those calls came into me initially before Julie became the liaison for the AOC. And that I also have been staying in touch with Kate in terms of recovery activities. And that it would be useful at some point to know what everyone else is following and tracking and which conference calls, who is sitting in on, just so that we can make sure that we're covering a spectrum of our issues and needs.
All right. Annabelle, do you have any?
The only thing I have to add is that I've been trying to add the governor's conference calls. I've missed a couple of them, but I think Pat, you're just trying to get keep on them too, and so just keeping that, keeping that up. And then the downside to all this is I'm getting stir-crazy.
Yeah. I'm also listening in on the governor's conference calls and AOC calls whenever I can. I have not been listening in on the national White House calls that require RSVP in advance. But, you know, again, if we want someone of us to be doing that, I'm available. Just let me know.
Well, I would go back to Annabelle's comments earlier about, to put it nicely, mixed messages coming from the national level. And personally, I'm pretty much ignoring those and plan on the Friday OHA 11 o'clock conference call. And then at 1:00, we have a 30-minute report from Sarah Mean in Business, Oregon. So I will continue to track on those. They're regularly scheduled and I think have been worthwhile.
One thing I've had, and I don't remember the topic exactly which one it was, Pat, the people asking us to take calls, the governor and our members of Congress for specific things. I think without having any background information from, regarding some of those topics, I would, I would say we refrain from doing that unless we have a conversation or it's something that we know that we're in sync with. That, I forget what the item was, but it wasn't something I had real affinity for supporting. And so just wanted to kind of check in with you guys as how do you feel about some of those requests?
The ones I remember, Annabelle, were from AOC asking to, with the federal large trillions of dollars of authorization to make sure that a significant portion of that money gets to state and local, or county and local governments and entities. And I feel like you, I think our congressional delegation probably has a pretty good handle on that. And we're getting regular briefings from Congressman DePazio and our two senators. So I'm not sure that, I didn't feel like that I needed to weigh in on that, but I could be wrong.
I think, I think some of these, you know, depending on what he is to it, I think that we have very good relationships with our, with our elected, federal elected officials. And so I kind of, kind of know what sense I'm really, what I feel that we would like to weigh in on. But the request was something that I felt rose to that level.
I think that it might be the letter that we received via AOC from Mary Starett and the Yamhill County Commissioners. That would be quite a worthy point. And some of them I agreed with wholeheartedly, and some of them I don't think that we as a board would have agreed with.
Right, right. So that's what I'm talking about, is that, that, no, I suspect we're going to be getting a lot of those kinds of requests on which we add on this and help us out and all this. But I'm really hesitant to do it without having a conversation about it.
I think that's correct. And the letter from the Yamhill County Commissioners that came in late last week, I would have loved to respond to, but restrained myself and not sure that it's worth, with all the things we have going on, that we can't respond to every, every request. And that particular one seemed really not appropriate at this time to ask the state to refund money on taxes that have been passed and maybe the, some Yamhill County folks didn't agree with and thought this would be a wonderful time to weigh in. And I would seriously disagree with that.
I would say again, thank you for these Tuesday and Thursday policy meetings, because if we do need to respond more quickly to something like that, at least now we have a time to be able to do so. And the only other announcement that I would make is that in my role as the Benton Community Foundation Board Member, the foundation has stood up a COVID-19 response fund to help support nonprofits in this time of need. They are actively soliciting donations for that fund, and it's building fast. It's been a great partnership with United Way for the three counties. And it's just another vehicle that we can direct people to if they want to help provide support to vulnerable populations in the community.
Okay, I have one item to report. And last Friday, I met with Lynn McKee and Andrew Martin and his wife at the fairgrounds. And I think this shows, well, this doesn't have anything to do with our current emergency, but we need to keep some of our major projects moving forward. And when Andrew Martin has a proposal, I think the county is well-served to pay attention and keep that dialogue going. It has to do with an adjacent, approximately 12-acre piece of property adjacent to the fairgrounds, south and west of current fairgrounds. And so, no concrete proposal at this point. But Andrew Martin has a plan for his properties that are around the fairgrounds, and one of them he's willing to talk about selling to the county. Zan?
I do have one, one more item, and that is that with the respect to the major elements that I've been working on, hope board activities have been suspended, as you probably know, and given that Julie has been seconded to the AOC for that liaison role. And so that's off to one side. But the other is the criminal justice systems improvement work, and that is ongoing. We did have our ops team meeting last week. And we are in a period of time when DLR is working with us in a way that they can easily accommodate remotely. They're going to continue to meet with folks here over this space and program planning needs, but they'll do that over Zoom. So that work is going to continue to proceed, and we're going to do our best to keep that going as we can during this period of time, so that we don't get behind our timelines there. Obviously, we'll have to do some adjusting in terms of any kind of public outreach and engagement in a real directed way. But we can do some small meetings even now, using technology instead of in person.
Well, and I think that that shows we have some large projects in the pipeline. We need to keep the momentum up. We may adjust the timetable to fit our current situation, but I think it's important to keep things moving forward even at a reduced rate.
Commissioners, I feel it's my obligation and responsibility to acknowledge that you have a number of initiatives that are important to you as well as the organization.
Right.
I will tell you that I think it is unlikely that we can continue at the pace that we have been over the course of the last six months or a year in pursuit of those. That doesn't mean we're taking them off our plate by any means. But right now, we're piercingly focused on our response to the coronavirus. And I would imagine our ability to continue to move things forward as expeditiously as we have been are going to be somewhat limited over the coming months. So I don't want to mislead you and tell you we have all the resources in the world to continue to move things forward, but yet acknowledging the importance that the board places on those initiatives. We will continue to do what we can, and I will keep an open dialogue with you as we are moving those forward. Or if we're having to take our foot off the gas pedal, I'll be communicating that to you as well.
Okay. Well, we've heard the word flexibility many times this morning, and I think that fits right in, readjusting our priorities and to make sure we're putting our.
I have another item that people have called me about, and I don't know how critical it is, but you know that the federal income tax, the bill has been delayed till, I believe, July 15? The question I've gotten from several people is, is the state going to do the same thing? And the reason they're asking that is sometimes when you file your tax, big tax form, I believe, that you include something that's on your federal tax form, and so there was a concern about that. I have not heard anything about the state following suit. Have either of you?
No.
I have not.
Commissioners, this is Mary.
Yeah.
And by Friday, as the Department of Revenue was supposed to say something on my CPA forum, everyone's asking the same question, but by Friday, we should hear.
Well, good, because, you know, people that are, you know, locked down at home are really concerned about getting all this stuff done, yet they don't have the energy to get, work on their taxes.
Yeah, and you can't do your Oregon return without doing your federal return, so it's pretty, be a pretty good bet that they're going to do it, but should have official word by the end of the week.
Super.
Mary, is it correct, you're still supposed to file by April 15, but you don't have to pay, you don't have to pay till July 15?
You don't have to file, so. You don't have to file or pay now. It started with, it started with not paying, but now it's not filed as well.
And for some people, it pays estimated tax, that's been postponed three months also.
I believe so, yes.
We are in uncharted times.
I just want to ask the Commissioners, we had kept my meeting with you for tomorrow on the calendar as a placeholder. But now that we have Thursday meeting scheduled, I don't see the need for a meeting tomorrow morning. So if you all are okay, we can just cancel that meeting and plan to reconvene this group on Thursday at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Network debate.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's in our calendars, right?
It is, so just ignore it, and what I'll do is I'll send you a very brief update on anything that has transpired on any of my projects. Very uninteresting reading, given the context of our daily lives today.
Yeah.
Well, I look forward to that.
So do I.
Commissioners, before we adjourn, I do want to commend our county staff. They're doing a tremendous job of responding to this. There are so many discussions and partnerships and problem-solving, and that goes on daily behind the scenes, and that is continuing, continuing at an ever-greater fervor. And so when you see either us over the video, or if you happen to run across us in person, you'll notice that many of us have dark circle under, dark circles under our eyes, more so than ever. So just know we are lucky to have such a dedicated, committed staff to working through this problem.
That's wonderful.
I think that was obvious this morning.
I would say that I, part of the way I know how well you all are working together and working with our partners in the AOC is the fact that we haven't had as much scrambling to do as commissioners to do either the messaging or some of the kind of basic work that some of our fellow commissioners are having to do around the state. So thank you.
Yeah.
You think? You're doing a fantastic job. Please don't burn out, and call on us when you need help.
Yeah, I told you that the other day when I talked to you, so I think we all feel the same.
And Zan, back to your question of who's doing what as far as conference calls, I'll start an email and write down what I'm planning on covering, and maybe we can send that around and make sure that we've got at least one of us on the important phone conferences.
That sounds good. Part of the reason I haven't done too much of that is just the issue of forums, so I've been cautious about that kind of coordination of hoping to be able to do that at this kind of meeting, and, but, you know, if we're okay to do that by email, that's fine, too.
Be, just be careful. All you're doing is just passing information along.
Yep.
Correct. For your information.
FYI. I'll put that at the top. Anything else? Well, we have other, but I think we've hopefully covered everything today. So thank you. Keep up the good work, and we'll do this again soon.
All right. Thank you all.